Nope. Is there a way to check and make sure I'm in the right thing?
Good morning.
That's my wife, huh?
Michelle.
No, we've been at a meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna pull, we're gonna pull, uh... We're gonna pull seventeen three, all right?
Okay. So as I understand it, they're gonna name all the pieces of law that come forward, then I'm gonna...
Good morning. I'm doing really good, still watching.
Um, I can, yeah. Yeah, you know what? I do agree that I said... She told you they're gonna do, that's what they're gonna do.
She said, "Call them all up," I think, "and then I'll go down and hand them all out one time, save a little bit of time."
That would be a reminder to folks to turn their phone off. Well, good morning. Welcome to the April twenty-second Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand with me and join with us as we pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. We'll be led today by Supervisor Ashida.
Ready salute.
Hi, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's a great day to have so many of our employees here today. I ask you to bear with us as we get through a few other things. Our first item of business today is Board of Supervisor matters. We'll start with Supervisor Innes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the twelfth, in Porterville, we had a big youth summit at Port Naz, and there was probably, I would say, six, seven hundred students that attended that in as far north as Madera. So what a great function. This is one of many things that they're doing in the Porterville area. We're doing the Step Up program over there too with our mini summits. So this is all to keep these people informed and to keep everybody on the right track and know that there are abusive people out there, there's bullying, there's different things going on. So just making note of that and keeping people updated and educated, I think, is very, very important. The following day, I went to SciCon. Now, that's another youth that teaches the young people about mountain areas and about nature. And we had people from all over Tulare County at that meeting. It was, yeah, it was great seeing everybody and having lunch up at SciCon. I wish they would've had that when I was a kid, but, you know, I'm way past me that, when they started that. So what a great program, too. This last week, we also, in preparation for the upcoming Porterville Fair, I chaired the sales committee where we sell all the animals at the fair. We had our final meeting before the fair where we mailed all the buyers' numbers out with information and trying to help the young people sell their animals when the fair is over, 4-H and FFA. And of course, we do have the 4-H Fair in conjunction with the Porterville Fair now. So we got kids from all over the county, not just from the Porterville, Lindsay, Strathmore, and Springville areas. So what a great program for that. Friday, we'll be having our San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting in Fresno, nine o'clock. Supervisor Worley and Supervisor Ashida and I will be going to that at nine o'clock. So updating on how we're doing. And we have a lot of different entities that want to join us. We've got different cities on board, we've got other counties looking at us besides Fresno. Fresno, Tulare County started this together to try to stabilize our insurance rates. But in some cases, they weren't stabilized with the Obamacare coming on. It kind of hit us to the tune of about 2.4 million, so... But we'll continue to work towards that. And of course, this weekend is the big Springville Sierra rodeo. And we'll be going up there for the parade and the rodeo on Saturday and Sunday, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Supervisor Ashida.
Well, Supervisor Innes, when you speak of SciCon, you wasn't there when you were a kid. Well, that's where we used to camp with the Boy Scouts. There's a couple of things I'd like to cover. Last, yesterday evening, we had a meeting about the study of the Tulare Lake Basin groundwater, water issues. And we're wrapping that study up, and we should have that study completed by the end of the year and report back to the legislature. It's been a very productive study and involves four counties, Fresno, Kings, Tulare, and Kern County. And hopefully, it'll put us on the right track for the proposed water bonds that are coming up to address the water issues in disadvantaged communities. The one thing I've noticed in all the proposed water bonds is that every one of them has a portion of funds set aside for those disadvantaged communities. Yesterday, I was driving back home after our water meeting, and I heard the announcement that the U.S. Attorney General, Eric Holder, announced that they're gonna start accepting applications from federal prisoners to commute their sentences for drug offenders. And that really kind of upset me because the drug offenders that are in federal prison aren't not your local drug dealers. They have much bigger ties, and they are... They are the worst of the worst. And after meeting with the law enforcement people in Washington, D.C. a couple of weeks ago, the Forest Service people, their enforcement budget's been cut by fifteen percent. And what we told them is that because of the efforts and the success that our Sheriff's Department has and the other valley Sheriff's Departments, is that we're, it's gonna push more growth back up into the federal lands. Right now, we are subsidizing the federal government on law enforcement approximately $100,000 a year. What really bothers me is that not only are local law enforcement, but federal law enforcement people, put their lives on the line to enforce the law. And to have our Attorney General and our President commute these sentences, it just makes me wonder what it's worth. And the other side of it is that if our Sheriff's Department continues to go up on public lands, this board will absolutely support whatever decision our Sheriff's Department makes, even though it will cost money from our general fund. I think probably it's been an accumulation of a lot of things that's happened in Washington, D.C. And I just wonder if they take a different oath of office than we take locally. It's just very frustrating for a local government to deal with what's happening in the state of California and Washington, D.C. And that's all my soapbox, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spent the better part of two weeks in Washington, D.C. once with the Air District as your representative on the Air Board meeting that was originally scheduled for last fall was because of the government shutdown was continued to this year. And then the following week with Tulare County Government, which I'm sure Supervisor Cox will cover. And then next week, I'll leave for another better part of a week to go with the Tulare County Association of Governments. My takeaway at this point in our business to Washington has been that if you're looking for regulatory type of changes, you may have some success there. If you're looking for money, forget it. Funds are drawing up, as Mr. Ashida indicated, fifteen percent cut to the Department of Agriculture, to their, to the law enforcement on public lands. And what we're trying to do really is hang on to what little we do get from PILT, Payment in Loe of Taxes, SCAP, which reimburses the county for the housing of alien folks in our jails. And those are just small percentages of the actual cost incurred by the county. And we're just trying to hang on to what we have with really no expectation that there'll be any more. My take on the matter is that the government control, spending is out of control. And if we don't get control of our entitlement programs, it's gonna become, continue to get worse. There's less and less discretionary funds to pay for other responsibilities of the federal government, including protection of their own properties. But that's my takeaway for now. It's nice to be back in Tulare County for a brief period of time, and I'll be gone for next week. Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm gonna cover a little bit of my personal life, but I'm waiting for the picture to show up on Michelle's computer, so... But real quick, I'll cover some of my supervisor items that I want to make sure I go over. Today is Earth Day, as many of you know. And I really do want to congratulate and encourage all of the unincorporated areas that, and all the unincorporated communities that take part in this day and take this opportunity to really clean their communities and take pride and show other residents what their community is about, and that it is a great place to live, and people do take pride, even when they live in an unincorporated community versus an incorporated city. So I'm really proud of the communities that I represent. I know that Tipton does a really great job, and Allensworth does a really great job as well. And really hope that other communities take the opportunity to collaborate with community partners to help make a difference in their towns. Leadership Tulare, the program that the Tulare Chamber of Commerce runs, is having their Leadership, I'm sorry, County Government Day this Thursday here at the county complex. And they are going to be covering various aspects of county government. And I appreciate all the department heads that are participating. And I look forward to an educational day for all of the young leaders that the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring through the Leadership Tulare Program. Friday at nine a.m. on April twenty-fifth, that's obviously Friday, the Tulare County Special Olympics event will be held at the Bob Mathias Stadium. It's gonna be another great event. The local Kiwanis Clubs work really hard to put on a great event for all of the youth and the competitors. And it's really nice because it's such a great spirit of competition and fun. And I really do encourage everyone to attend and see that. It's really a heartwarming experience, and I look forward to being a part of that. And then on Monday, the Tulare City School District will be having a Character Counts event at Los Tules Middle School. And that event is where they honor the students at the Tulare City School System who demonstrate the pillars of character in everything that they do. And it's pretty, pretty cool, and they recognize a lot of youth for their contributions to their campuses, so... That's really great, and I'm not really trying to ramble on, I'm just seeing Michelle get all these things going. But in my personal life, it's hard to believe it's been almost a month since our last meeting, but my wife did give birth to our first child. And so we now have a son, Pete John Vanderpool IV. He was born on March twenty-sixth at eight oh eight in the morning, was six pounds, five ounces, so he was a little guy. But he was nineteen and a half inches long, really has been just a real gift and a blessing. He was born healthy, and there's a little picture of the little tyke right there, so... That was, that was the day he came home from the hospital, so that was... And that was his going-home-from-the-hospital outfit, and he's just absolutely swimming in that thing right now. And today, he fits in it completely, so it shows how fast babies grow. But a lot of sleepless nights and a lot of diapers to change, but sure enjoy my life as a father, so thank you all for the well wishes.
Thank goodness he took after his mother.
That's what we're all hoping for. Well, a comment on Supervisor Ashida and Innes is about SciCon. When I stayed in SciCon in the sixth grade, the cabins were already old and falling apart. So a few things last week. Had the Agriculture Advisory Committee. We received an update on the Confined Animal Facility Program. Looking forward to that coming out. We're also going to, the next month, look at abandoned orchards ordinance. San Diego has one, and we're gonna be looking at, you know, given that we could have some abandoned orchards or orchards that just let go because of our water issues, that group will be looking at ordinances and making a recommendation back to the board. Last week, also attended the TCAG Mitigation Banking Committee meeting. We're moving along very well with that. We received the report back from the consultant in regards to about fourteen project areas that will be, have potential mitigation needed on them for endangered species. We have staff members right now working on a, on the top three or four items so that we can create a bank and hopefully move our mitigations measures quickly through the process when we come upon projects. Yesterday, attended the Step Up Task Force Executive Committee Strategic Planning Meeting in Thurivers. Glad to be up in Supervisor Ashida's area specifically because there is no cellphone service, and we were able to get a lot of work done. So we're, we're moving quickly with the strategic plan. We'll have that done and presented to the board for our next fiscal year. Two weeks ago, this board, or three weeks ago, this board went to Washington, D.C. Supervisor Vanderpool, as he stated, was home changing diapers. And we, we did not bring back a pot full of money, which is what I've been telling people, but we brought back a wealth of knowledge. I am very impressed with the lobbyists that we have in Washington, D.C. right now. They were able to get us in to see some of the right people at the right time to help answer questions we've had about programs. And, you know, we felt in areas that were kind of being, I would think, railroaded or not given complete information, and it was nice to be able to sit down across the desk from the people that are actually in charge of the funding, ask them direct questions, and for the most part, having them give us direct answers. So we did bring back a wealth of information. We had a great time there. I returned on Thursday, I believe the rest of the board returned on Friday. So I don't know what meetings they had on Friday, but I can tell you the meetings we had Wednesday and Thursday were from morning until evening, and they were packed full of very good information that we did receive from our Washington, D.C. I would say staff, as we visit with the electeds, they all say the same thing. You know, we know what they're going to say, there's no money, we're doing the best we can. But I think the real productive meetings were done when we met with staff, especially with the Supervisor Ashida mentioned, the National Park Service. They told us right up front before we asked anything, we received a fifteen percent cut to our budget this year. So not only is there no new money, but there will probably be less money. So it was, it was good to have that, those straightforward discussions with the people in Washington, D.C. And that is all I have. Any further comments about Washington?
Yes.
Yeah, I forgot to make note of Success Dam. And of course, that was in several meetings, not only with the core, but with appropriations people to try to get money in case we can enlarge the pool. As many people know, they did take the restrictions off Success Dam, and that's, that's good. That's good for the Porterville area, that's good for our farmers and irrigation. And it's also good for recreation because they put an RFP out now for a marina. So that tells me that we're on the right track. They're filling all the holes they drilled in the dam during the tests, the millions and millions of dollars we spent on it, and now we're right back to square one, where they're gonna let us fill us to capacity. But SOG Committee will meet in July, and they'll come back with their recommendations. We're hoping we get at least a DSAC III, and then go from that DSAC III and say, "What have we gotta get to DSAC IV so we can enlarge the pool?" So kind of that's where we are right now.
The wealth of knowledge that we gained in Washington, D.C., I forgot to mention this, that we met with one of the head people from the Federal Crop Insurance Program. And you've seen in the newspapers and you've watched on television people pushing their trees out in anticipation of the lack of water. Well, specifically, we asked them, "Are there gonna be funds or grant, grant money, monies available for them to replant those trees in a program?" And they said, "As of now, they believe there will be funds available from the federal government to help replant the orchards that are lost, the permanent plantings." The other surprising element of that conversation was, is before, when you were dealt with the federal government, and you were gonna take out your trees, someone from the Farm Services Agency had to come out and look at your trees and approve for you to take those trees out, so you would get some assistance for removing that crop. But now, they're saying it's up to the county committee, but they're gonna be very lax that they do not need to come out and visibly inspect the grove or vineyard that is being pushed out. So it's a lot more flexible than it's ever been before. So the people you see on television and in the newspaper that push their grows out because of the lack of water, because of the drought, they may be able to get compensation or help from the federal government where in years before, they would not because they were not inspected by a federal employee. So that, I think that's good news for all the permanent farmers that are gonna lose a lot of acreages throughout the valley because of the drought.
So we didn't bring back a pot full of money, but we did bring back a wealth of knowledge. And I think it was a very beneficial trip. Actually pulled our lobbyist aside and said, "I will be back." I've not been to Washington, D.C. for some time, felt we, we needed someone to represent us better at the lobbyist level, and we have that now. So we'll now move to our next item, which is number two, a presentation by our county librarian, Jeff Scott. And Sue Gillison will be presenting a proclamation proclaiming this month as adult literacy.
Thank you, Supervisor, and congratulations on your baby. We'll see him at the library very soon. I know you're a big library supporter, so we're gonna start that early.
He'll be signing up to be a tutor real soon.
All right, sounds good. I'll very briefly introduce Sue, since my voice is top-notch this morning. But Sue Gillison's doing an excellent job with Adult Literacy Program, serving citizens countywide. One of the biggest issues we have in the county is low educational attainment and low literacy levels. And Sue Gillison and Kim Torres and Win Doyle and her cadre of volunteers and partners have been fighting a good fight there and making good things happen, so I'll introduce you to Sue Gillison.
Thank you, and thank you very much for letting us come say a quick hello. This is what we love to do, is share some of our successes. As you know, the Read to Succeed Adult Literacy Program is a Tulare County-wide program where we target adults in our community who need assistance on anything literacy. That's basic learning, ESL, folks that are going after their GED or this sort of high school competency that we can help them with. We also have a couple of programs aimed at the little folks, and that would be yours. Early learning for families, and we do go into the community and share those really important practices that we do in our homes to make literacy and reading part of our culture. And that's something that we need to do from, from day one on up. So thank you again for the support of the county. We like to come yearly and just tell you what's new since we met you last. At this time last year, we were just getting going our extension into the city of Tulare. And we are thrilled at the result of some amazing groundwork from a number of people. And I want to take the time to just, you know, thirty seconds to tell you how that happened. There was a group of very committed citizens, both within the Congregational Church and in the family, the Torres Family Foundation, that said, "Nope, literacy is not going away here. We want to keep it going." So with a lot of volunteer time and hard work and goodwill, they kept that going. And we want to thank Jeff for his vision to say, "Yes, the county will step in" and kind of umbrella into that region as well. So Kim Torres, my colleague here from Tulare, now has a successful, thriving program in the city of Tulare for those folks that need services there. So we're thrilled that that has come to fruition, and it's been a wonderful conglomeration of supporters. Since we met you last, we've gone through a metamorphosis in our GED program. It's, they've made a new one, and it's a doozy. So it's not for sissies, and we're not backing down. So it's, it's taking a lot of time and relearning for anybody in the, in the field of adult education. Next month, we'll be having our annual Tutor Learner Conference, something we again do each year to learn something and rub elbows with our fellow folks in literacy. It's a very good time for us to brainstorm and bring our services up to where they need to be. Another thing that's new, that I'm very pleased about, our library and our literacy program are part of the new Sequoias Adult Education Consortium, which has recently been formed secondary to AB eighty-six, which says, "In the future, adult education will be funneled through these consortiums, and it's important that anybody in adult education understands how we fit in, in all of adult education." So how do we communicate with other providers of adult ed, whether it's community colleges, adult schools, other literacy programs? So we are part of that conversation and actively taking part in that, in that group of folks. The most important thing that we wanted to do today, and this is why I love my job, we have some amazing people in Tulare County that knock on our door and say, "How can I help?" And these are our volunteer tutors. They're retired teachers, they're students, they're unemployed, they're, you name it, and they are here. So I would love it if they'd take a second to stand up and say hello. And these are the folks that make it happen right here. So I can have my tutors. That's why I love my job, right there. We also have some visitors with us from Los Rosas in Tipton, also providing a very valuable literacy service in that community. I'd like to take a second to introduce two of our students. This is where you see the fruits of our labor. The first student works with us in Visalia. So Veronica, you wanna come up here? This is Veronica Serrano. You're not gonna believe this. Several years ago, she came to us as an ESL student and morphed into a COS student and morphed into a Covered California Representative for the Family Healthcare Network, and is now morphing into a Fresno State student. And somewhere along there, got her citizenship while she was with us as well. So nothing's gonna get away. So I asked Veronica if she would just take a second to maybe express what it was like working with a volunteer tutor.
Oh, hi, my name is Veronica Serrano, I have a, Sue is playing. I have the opportunity to be, to... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have the opportunity, I'm sorry, I have the opportunity to, to, to get, to be in the literacy center with Sue, and then I get my citizenship there, my citizenship there, and also, right now, I have a tutor. She's, she's sick right now, but she teaches me how to speak English. I'm doing well right now. Also, I have a brother that has two years old, and then, and they also have a program that is ELF program. And then I go like every, one, one Friday of the month, and then, because in our home, we only speak Spanish. And then he, he raised, he only speaks Spanish right now, but when he goes there, like, he's so excited, like, because they, they speak English, like, I love to be, like, I have, I love to be in those, in those kind of programs. And I want also to thank everyone that put the, the little effort to, to help those kind of programs because we need a lot in this, in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a wonderful example of someone who has seized an opportunity and taken it to its full extent. I'm gonna pass the microphone to my colleague, Kim, who's brought one of her students from Tulare to do the same. So Kim Torres.
It's such an honor to be here, and I call Sue all the time, and I go, "I love my job. It is so much fun to get up in the morning and go to work. I look forward to it, I talk about it constantly." And it's just such an amazing program, and I just feel so blessed to be a part of it and to have Sue on my side, 'cause she is just a wealth of information, and she can answer any question from, "What book do I..." of information, and she can answer any question from, "What book do I put this person in?" and, "What do I do with this or that?", and, and she's just amazing. I just appreciate and love her and Jeff so much. Without them, the program never would have carried on and been as successful as it is today. I also brought one of our students, and she was on board right when I first came, and she has just been such a delight and touched the hearts of everybody in our Read to Succeed program as well at Congregational Church, so I'd like her to come up and just say a few things. Her name is Kalash Rana.
Hello, I'm, my name is Kalash Rana, and one year, India is, go to one year here, America, and no English. Everybody is no English. It's Kim is my help. Every day is church and study English. Very nice teacher and my help, and English speaking and writing and reading is, Kim is, and adult school is my help, is, is no English. And everybody program is dentists and it's Kim is my help. Just thank you.
Again, thank you very much for letting us come say hello and for taking the time to proclaim this as Adult Literacy Day. We appreciate it.
Sue and Jeff.
Let's have all the tutors come too. Might as well have them all come on. Sue kind of let me off the hook this year. The last couple of years, I've done a, one of the study sessions for the adult teachers, and it's been a wonderful opportunity for me to get to know them, get to interact with them, and to share a little bit with them. And she did let me off the hook this year. All I have to do is attend, I don't have to teach anything, so I appreciate that. So, it gives me great pleasure to, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, to proclaim, declaring this day, today, April 22nd, as Adult Literacy Day in Tulare County. There's a whole lot of wherethes here. I don't think you really need to hear those. I think what you needed to hear was the two students that were here today and how successful the program has been in their lives, and I've seen this happen for the many years that I've been here. Every once in a while, you get a little note from Sue or from someone saying that we have this person who passed their GED, or this person who achieved this milestone in their life. So, they're, they're just not teaching reading, but they're teaching life skills down there as well. So, we appreciate everything that they do. If you guys like to come around, we'll present the proclamation, and we'd like to take a picture with you.
Mr. Chairman, we need to take action on item number two before you go.
I would move for approval of this item, and really appreciate all the work that the tutors and the library does to make this program possible. It's really making a difference, so thank you.
Moved by Randerpoel, second by Innes. Vote is unanimous, thank you very much. Michelle, this next one, an action item as well?
No, it's not.
Okay. Because we will, at this time, call up Steve and Hazen to make the presentation.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, it was there. Being from IT, we hope you know how to work that.
This last year, we started the, actually, this is the Second Annual Digital Photography We asked photographers of all ages and skill levels to submit images for, in the four categories, city, agriculture, mountains, and we also included Instagram. The judging panel were some community members, county councils, or county staff selected the best, rated the top three. First place photos in each category featured on the county website and social media. Today, the, the Board of Supervisors will honor all winners with a certificate. Agriculture, first place was Corn Fields by Troy Robinson. If any of the photographers are here today, we'd like you to, to come up if you're here. Second place in agriculture, Daniel Yang, or Jang. Agriculture, third place, again, Daniel Jang. First place in city, Michael Bowen. Second place in city, Amber Dawn. Third place, Devo Maloff. First place, Instagram, Maria Gaetan. Second place, Instagram, Devo Maloff. Third place, Instagram, Marina Gaetan. First place in mountains, Tamara Dow. Second place in mountains, Stephen Bruno. Third place in mountains, Troy Robinson. And then we also did Facebook favorites in each of the categories. So, people that follow the county on Facebook were able to like the photos individually, and these are the top pics from Facebook. Once again, agriculture by Troy Robinson. This is the Pantalix Live at LJ Williams by Rea Quitasol, if I've got that name right. Rea also had the top four Instagram, which is Taylor Brothers, and also mountains for the Sequoia Sunset. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your talent with the county. We appreciate that very much. We're going to now do our item number four, the Service Award Presentations. Look forward to this every year. Employees, I think they'll, I won't go on, I remember the dialogue from last year where Rhonda will explain where the other employees, the five and 10-year employees, receive their recognitions. So, we're, we're very grateful that you are here today. We honor you as employees and look forward to presenting you with awards. We will now turn the time over to Rhonda.
Good morning, Chairman Cox and members of the Board, CIO Rousseau, and our Council. I'm honored today to bring before you to celebrate the long service of our county employees. The Service Award Program recognizes employees who have completed 10 or more years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. We honor these employees today for their loyalty, their hard work, the valuable continuity and historical memory they provide to our departments, and their commitment to being public stewards, to contributing to the need of our citizens of our county. 116 awards for employees who have completed 10 years of service will be presented in the employees' departments. Today, beginning with 15 years of service, and for completion of each, five years of additional service, the awards are presented annually by your Board. Today, you will be presenting 36 awards. 23 will be for 15 years of service, six are for 20 years of service, five for 25 years, and two for 35 years of service. Additional awards will also be given out next week on the 29th of April by your Board. Fellow employees, as your name is called, please come forward here to the podium to receive your award. Some of you may have boxes for your awards, so after the ceremony, if you would step forward again, and Judy Weens, our Department Secretary for Human Resources, will provide your boxes. Judy is also the coordinator for this program, and I would like to acknowledge her service and her hard work in putting this together every year. So, we'll begin with District One. Supervisor Alan Ashida will present to Amy Marie Costa. Amy is a Civil Attorney Five in our County Council Office, and is with this, she's with the Protective Services Team. She is a local product, having attended Tipton Elementary School, graduated from Tulare Union High School, earned an English degree at UC Davis, and graduated from McGeorge School of Law. She has been an Employee of the Year for County Council, and she is the daughter of Jim and Linda Costa of Tulare. Our next recipient is Eric Coyne, who is the Tourism and Film Commissioner Manager within our Resource Management Agency. Now, Eric was shy and didn't submit any information, but many of us have worked with Eric for 15 years, and know a few things about him, so I'll start out in that I know he has a famous dog named Mr. Mabels. He has an energetic wife named Joanne. He started out working with the Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to leave it to the Board members to tell anything more they want to share.
When Supervisor Cox and I arrived on the Board 10 years ago, Eric worked for the Board as one of our representatives. From there, we decided that we were going to create an IPO position, and Eric filled that position as the Informational Officer, and then he was promoted to do tourism, and then he took on, he's our Film Commissioner for Tulare County. And through the hard work of Eric and the Film Department, we have film crews literally here every other week, and because of that responsibility, Eric spends sometimes upwards to probably 80 hours a week working with those people, and they work, they come in on the weekends, and he's also worked with Neil Pilliard, our Parks Manager, and driven through the snow to take film crews up to Bolsh Park. And it's been a pleasure to work with Eric for all these years, and I'm sure that, that Tulare County is much better off because Eric is with us, and he also serves on the Economic Development Team, which has been very successful. So, that's what you get for not putting anything down on, for Rhonda, so congratulations, Eric.
Kurt Steagle, Ag and Standards Inspector III. 15 years of service with our Ag Commissioner Sealer's Office. Kurt has earned his Bachelor's Degree in Zoology from the UC Santa Barbara and has a Master's Degree from Fresno State in Animal Science. His hobbies are raising birds, traveling, gardening, and landscaping. He has been married for 20 years to beautiful wife Nicole, and has two wonderful children, Harrison and Daniel, and one grandson. David Taylor, Heavy Equipment Mechanic III. David is with the Resource Management Agency and will receive 15-year Service Award. He has attended our County Supervisor Academy, and his supervisor, Steve Nolan, says David always takes a lot of pride in each task that he completes. Michael Wallace, Probation Officer III. 15 years of service with our probation department. He started as an extra-help group supervisor, promoted to institution supervisor, and then went up the ranks of probation officer to probation officer III, where he's assigned to the juvenile courts and the Tulare County Youth Facility Aftercare Program. His hobbies include music, reading, baseball, hiking, and camping. He has a wife named Audrey and are the proud parents of Gracie Wallace and Jacob Wallace. Cynthia Hilton. Cynthia is a Dietitian I with Health and Human Services and has been serving Tulare County for 20 years. She works in the WIC program. She has been honored by the Porterville Development Center's Dietetic Internship Program by Grace Lutheran Church. She is married of 29 years and has two wonderful grown children. Congratulations. District Two. Supervisor Peter Vanderpool. Our first recipient is Jorge Abad. Jorge is an IT Network Technician Two with our IT Department and has 15 years of service. He has served as a, in the United States Air Force, has worked for GTE, and came to work for Tulare County. He listens to music, plays his guitar, and he hopes to be the proud father of a future Patricia Jones, Child Support Officer Three. Patricia is receiving her 15-years-of-service award, started with the county as a Legal Office Assistant One, went into the Child Support Officer Series, and is now a Three Level. She enjoys playing with her Chihuahua mixed dog, and she says the older she gets, the more she thinks she is the boss. Dennis Haynes, 35 years of service. Dennis is our Agricultural Staff Biology Biologist with the Ag Commissioners Department. He started as an Ag Inspector One, became an Ag Inspector Three in 1982, graduated from Clovis High School and Fresno City College and Fresno State University. He has several achievements. In 2000, he received three different awards for his efforts on the Glassy Wing Sharpshooter and the Olive Fruit Fly. District Three. Chairman Cox will present, starting with Sergeant Chris Douglas from our Sheriff's Department. Sergeant Douglas is receiving her 15-year award. She was hired as a Deputy, promoted to Sergeant. She's worked in Patrol, Detentions, Investigations, and Personnel. She has served as Public Information Officer for the Department many times, and she's received several County and Communication, Community Recognition Awards for her work. Chris is a Supervising Probation Officer. He has been with the Department of Probation for 15 years, and he also started as a Group Supervisor and has worked his way up to where he is today in working as a supervising the Sex Offender Management Program, DUI and Domestic Violence. He has been a Range Master and Semunations Instructor, enjoys camping, hunting, fishing, and archery. Loopy is a Probation Officer Three, receiving her 15-year award today. She began as a Victims Advocate in our District Attorney's Office and moved from there in 2005 to probation. She is a First Female Range Master for Tulare County and Semunations Instructor for the Probation Department. She's engaged to Ryan Martinez and is the proud parent of two beautiful daughters and one handsome son. George is a Paralegal Two with our County Council's Office and works in the Protective Services Team. He is also a local product, having graduated from Washington Union High in Easton and attended his paralegal studies at COS and attended Fresno State majoring in Journalism. He'll be celebrating 20 years of marriage with his beautiful and incredibly patient wife in just one day. Michael Hickey, GIS Analyst for IT Department. Michael is receiving his 15-years-of-service award. He has worked for the county since 1998, has also had, worked for a small business, has a Masters of Science in Architecture from the University of Detroit. Robert Hill, IT Desktop Technician Two with the IT Department. Besides working for Tulare County, he worked 24 years for Kmart and was also in the Army for four years. He enjoys auto restoration, is a grandparent of eight, and a great-grandparent of two. Catherine Lobato, Supervising Child Support Officer. Fifteen years of service. Catherine began as a Senior Account Clerk and became a Child Support Officer and moved up the ranks to an Officer Three. She is very dedicated in developing staff towards meeting their highest potential. Catherine is always looking for ways to improve the big picture, says her supervisor, Patricia Williams. He is the Executive Director of our TCAG Department and is receiving 15 years of service today. He has worked with Tulare County in the Transportation Planning Area, has served on several Valley Committees, is the proud father of nine-year Teddy and a seven-year-old Caleb and wife Marta, and he is a bi-vocational minister for his church. Marilyn is our Ag Commissioner Sealer and is receiving her 20-year Service Award. She started as an Ag Inspector One. Among her hobbies is rescuing orchids from big-box stores and from people who can't grow them. She has two pet tarantulas, and I'll leave it up to CAO Rousseau if he would like to add anything.
Yeah, you know, thank you. After Marilyn was appointed, she was, it seemed to be in every newspaper and magazine in the county for a period of time. We call her Miss Cover Girl. And prior to taking over, she, her boyfriend is the Ag Commissioner of the County of Fresno, and she's stealing secrets behind the scenes to try to get us to move up the.
Our next recipient, Julia Langley, who's a Civil Attorney Five, County Council. Julia is receiving her 20-year Service Award today. She started with the District Attorney's Office and then moved over to County Council. Her supervisor, Crystal Sullivan, says of Julia, she's an excellent litigator, extraordinarily talented individual. Building Zoning Inspector Two is receiving his 20-year Service Award today. Robert has been Inspector for Tulare County as well as San Luis Obispo County and Pismo Beach. He enjoys, as his hobbies, different modes of transportation and sites, car racing and horseback riding. Judy Summers, Supervising Probation Officer. Judy is receiving her 20-year Service Award today. Among her hobbies is that she plays percussion in her church orchestra and also handbells in the handbell choir. She has three amazing grandchildren, PJ, Riley, and Emma. Robert Dempsey, Supervising Attorney. Robert is with our District Attorney's Office and is receiving 25 years of service today. He's also a local product, having graduated from Manatchee High School, attended UC Davis for Political Science and Public Service, and graduated from the Santa Clara Law School. He has been named Deputy District Attorney for the year and Prosecutor for the year. He has also been very active in his community, being a Big Brother since 1997. He works on our mock trial as a Coordinator, and his supervisor, Daniel Underwood, says Robert has an indispensable ambassador for our office during his tenure. His dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Tulare County has been second to none. Sergeant Mayberry has been with the Sheriff's Department for 25 years and is receiving his Service Award today. He was the first community-based officer for the Ivanhoe area. He is an instructor in handgun, tactical shotgun, rifle. He has advanced certificates in post and serves as a supervisor for the Dive Swiftwater Rescue Team. He remains very close with Frances Hawes and her three sons, regularly attending their school functions, birthdays, and celebrating holidays. His hobbies include hunting, fishing, shooting sports, and working on firearms. Amado Rivera, Custodial Worker Two. Amado is celebrating 25 years of service today. His hobbies include soccer, and he is a referee for high school city league. His supervisor, Teresa Barrett, says Amado does a great job with many years in the Custodial Division. Probation Officer Two, and he is receiving a 25-year Service Award. He began as a Group Supervisor at the RK Myers Youth Facility, and he is currently assigned to Behavioral Intervention Supervision Unit. He enjoys sailing and camping with family and restoration of old muscle cars and four-wheel drive. Johnny is the Chief Engineer for Resource Management Agency and is celebrating 25 years of service today. He has a Bachelor's in Civil Engineering. His hobby, he cites, is lately it's been work. He recently got a promotion. Fourteen, he has a 14-year-old daughter and a seven-year-old son. They're growing up faster than he would like to see that happen. Timothy is a Draftor Two with the Information Technology Department and is celebrating 35 years of service today. He graduated from COS with an AA in Architecture Design, enjoys camping, hunting, fishing, photography, and backpacking in the Sierras. District Four Supervisor Steve Worthley will present. Is Jennifer not here today? Okay, we'll make sure she gets her award or comes to the session next week. Shirley is receiving her 15-years-of-service. She is a Road Yard Assistant with RMA Resource Management Agency. She attended Ridley College, enjoys camping and going to the coast, has eight granddaughters and one grandson. Jose is a Probation Correctional Officer Two and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. He is another local product, having graduated from Woodlake High School, attended COS and Fresno State majoring in Criminology. His hobbies include sporting events, attending car shows, going to the beach, and attending concerts. Julian Lopez, Construction and Maintenance Worker Two. Julian is receiving his 20-year Service Award today, and he states, "After all this time, I have had the privilege of making lifelong friendships and met many employment goals. I still, after 20 years, look forward every morning to getting up and going to work. It is never a dull moment at work, and that makes my job interesting." His greatest pastime is Tejano dancing.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to District Five, I noticed someone was missing from this list. Maybe he's on the list next week, but we'd like to congratulate Supervisor Worthley for 15 years, but we didn't get him anything.
District Five Supervisor Mike Ennis will present. Esther is a Child Support Officer Three and is receiving 15-years-of-service award today. She started with us as a paralegal when it was District Attorney Family Support, and then left us to go to the GAIN Program in Porterville as a social worker, and then returned to child support in 1998. She's received numerous awards in her community. Her hobbies and interests is staying current with events and being active in Porterville City Chamber of Commerce. She is the proud parent of three adult children. Loopy is a Child Support Department employee, serving as a Legal Office Assistant Three for 15 years. She was shy, and so her supervisor says of her. During Loopy's time with the county, she has successfully promoted through the ranks to the lead position of Legal Office Assistant Three. Her friendly demeanor has allowed her to work well with coworkers, and her efforts are appreciated by the Department. Congratulations. Miguel Padilla. Miguel is the IT Infrastructure Supervisor and is celebrating 15 years of service. He has received awards and recognition for having done work at the juvenile facility awarded by the Board of Supervisors. He's been an Employee of the Month. He is a DJ on the side for various events and he is a paranormal investigator. Congratulations, Miguel. Laura Soto. Laura, yeah, Laura Soto, not Lori. Laura is a Child Support Officer Three and is receiving 15 years of service today. Her hobbies include running, exercises, movies, and she completed a one-half marathon last year. She's very proud of her children and what they have accomplished. One is at Questa College and the other and will be attending Cal Poly, and her son is employed full-time and has become a great man. Congratulations. And that completes our service awards for today.
We, I know we'd like to each say a little something. We'll start at the end with Supervisor Ennis to work our way through.
Well, we, you know, it's, it's, it's not really right to just, to give you guys awards one time a year because you work so hard all year. And we do appreciate everything you do on a daily basis because you are the face of Tulare County when people see you, and this is a big organization, but you truly are the face and you truly are the people that keep this county running and provide the services that all the people at Tulare County need and have. So, thank you so much for all you do.
Why don't you say that?
There's one thing that I've noticed on this list that has been a definite change in the last 10 years. When I first got on the board, there used to be a lot of service awards for 20 years and longer, and they were the majority of the awards. If you look at our list today and recognize our recipients, we have a lot of 15-year employees which will serve as the backbone for the county for many, many years. So, there's been a tremendous turnover and I'm glad to see that the recipients don't look like Ennis and I, that they're, they're a lot younger than, than us. And with Supervisor Ennis mentioned, you are the backbone, you are the future of our county, and thank you for your service.
I was thinking this morning when the, we were honoring the literacy program and the ladies got up and they said, "We just love our job. We just can't wait to get there in the morning." And I thought, "I hope everybody feels like it." Probably many of you don't. I know that, I mean, some of the jobs you do are not quite the same. I mean, there are different jobs, different tasks. Everybody has to serve a purpose in this world, and some jobs are the kind of things that you get up in the morning and you can't wait to do, and other times it's maybe not quite that exciting. But I do hope that you find that you are in a job that you do enjoy overall, and I realize there may be parts of the job that you do that are not as enjoyable as other parts of it, but hopefully you have matched yourself up with a job that you find rewarding and the county's a large enough organization. If you haven't found that job, it's out there because that's the nice thing about an organization of the size that we have, there are so many different opportunities for you all. You are more than the face of Tulare County. You are Tulare County. I mean, without you, we should appear as policymakers, but you are the ones who implement those policies every day, and we do appreciate you so, so very much. I always enjoy this event. I enjoy the little snippets of information about what is of interest to you, what your hobbies are, how people perceive you. And I was struck today by having somebody who's not only a great-grandparent, but twice, still working in Tulare County. Thinking about my great-grandfather was born in 1836, so anyway, that's not important to anything, but I just appreciate you all being here today. I hope that you recognize that we do appreciate you. Some of you we see regularly before the board meetings, others of you we don't see, but once every five years we give you these awards, but it's a privilege to have you working for us and for us working for you. Thank you.
You know, you talk about great-grandfather from the 1800s. That just shows how old you are, Supervisor Worthley, so I just want to throw that out there. But really, I just want to say thank you to our employees and, you know, Tulare County is only as good as the people that work for our organization, and you guys do a fantastic job, and the county has really come a long ways, even in the time that I've been on the board and just heard really great things about the people who live in this county, their experiences with county employees and the service that they're receiving. And I think it's really important that we have this each year and recognize those who are committed to Tulare County. I know my colleagues have made a lot of comments and I agree with all those comments and I really do appreciate the passion that you have for your jobs. No matter what you do, to be there for 15 years or longer, you have to have a level of passion and commitment, and we sure appreciate that as a board and appreciate what you do to serve the people that we serve and that elect us to be here in front of you and really do just thank you and hope that you still have another 15, 20, 30 years left in you too, because this county will be here continuously and we're going to need people that are committed to give good service and exceptional service, I should say, and I really do thank all of you who have served longer than I've even been alive, so thank you.
It just loves that line.
It's only good for so long, Phil.
It's getting shorter. You know, I want to also express my appreciation. Supervisor Worthley said something about doing a job you don't, you might, you know, have difficulty with. I can remember as a young contractor, on those days, knowing I was going to have to crawl through that attic and put those ducks together and do that kind of stuff, but at the end of the day, when you turn the switch and the air conditioning went on and everything worked, it was so rewarding. So, the difficult work, you know, had this, this payoff at the, at the end. And if you do have difficult things to do, I hope that you have that, that feeling of success at the end of the day when you get to turn the switch and it works. It might not be an air conditioner, some of you it would be, but it might be healing a relationship, bringing a family back together, settling a difficult case, a difficult issue. So, we appreciate all that you do. We know that some of you have very difficult things to do and we appreciate the job you do. We know it's beneficial. Before we let you go, we would like to have you stick around for just two more minutes. I know we have a couple of folks here to speak during public comment period. After public comment period, we will take a break so that those of you that need to get back to work can. So, at this time, we'll move to item number, number five, public comments. Anyone wishing to-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add something that Supervisor Vanderpoel brought up before we dismiss everybody.
You've been good at that today. Go ahead.
There has been a real cultural change in the county, and the people that you serve have a very positive attitude on the service that we're providing in this county, and I can't say that was really true 15, 20 years ago. So, I want to really thank you for changing the perception of how we serve our community. And that's from the bottom of my heart. I think I don't get the complaints that we used to get, and that's because of your positive attitudes.
Thank you. Rhonda did steal my thunder. She added up all of the years of service of those that are listed, 660 years, almost as long as Supervisor Ennis and Ashida have been around. So, this, this time, we'd like to move to public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on today's agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Juliette, if you could pull that mic around. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Cox and fellow supervisors. My name is Jeffrey Howard. I live at 3901 North Carson Street in Visalia. I am here representing over 3,000 members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints that live here in Visalia and Exeter. And on the item of service, Supervisor Ashida, we agree and that believe in serving here in, in our community, and I'm here to invite you and everyone in the room here today to Day of Community Service, which is this Saturday from 9:00 AM to noon, and there will be 10 projects going on here in Visalia, Woodlake and the Exeter area. We expect, last year we had over 500 volunteers and we expect the same or more this year. I have a letter inviting each of you to attend with some additional information, and I'll just highlight a few of the projects. We'll be at the Tulare County Museum at Mooney Grove. That's something we've done annually. And I know Chairman Cox has been a part of this service last year and probably in previous years as well, and I appreciate that. We'll, we will also be at Food Link, Food Link, the Pinkham Ponding Basin, Visalia Emergency Aid, Hats and Hair from Kids Who Care, which is a, a project started by youth for young cancer patients to help them out. It's a very heartwarming project if that's something you'd like to look into more. I love that one. The Bravo Botanical Gardens in Woodlake. We will also be painting and or guarding, gardening at three elementary schools, Golden Oak, Oak Grove and Visalia Technical Early College, and there will also be a blood drive. There is a website, if you go to choosetoservvisalia.org, all the projects are listed there. You can sign up there and videos, more photos, and there is a luncheon barbecue at the Riverway Sports Park from 12:30 to 2:00 PM. So, after serving, come out there, and we would love to see any of you, each of you out there on Saturday and anyone else here in this room as well. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Who can I hand the letters off to?
Michelle.
I appreciate your time very much this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Howard. Anybody else wishing to address the board this morning on items not on our agenda? Okay, seen none. We will take a short break so that those of you that need to leave, please feel free to leave, and we're going to reconvene in just about two minutes.
Hopefully it caught everything, I hope.
There's plenty of water.
You don't have a little bourbon in there?
I could use some. I had a couple less last night.
Will.
Get this place secured.
I don't know.
We'd like to call our meeting back to order. This time, we will take up the consent calendar. I do have a number of, of changes to note, so we could write those down. We'd like to pull item number 17 for separate consideration. Item number 39 will be moved to untimed items. Item number 36 is pulled and moved to next week, and item number 38 needs to be modified to increase the cost of pickup trucks not to exceed $25,000. So, item 38 will remain on consent, but the language is modified to increase the cost of pickup trucks not to exceed $25,000. Is that adequate, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, so are there any other items that need to be considered separately or pulled by the board? Public? Can you entertain a motion then to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Of course, Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Worthley, second by Ennis. Please cast your votes. It's unanimous. Okay, we will now take up item number 17 separately.
Good morning. My first time here, so let me know if I need to adjust my voice. Mary Lindsay, Assistant County Administrative Officer. On April 17, 2012, the board accepted funds for, from the state AB 900 jail construction financing program for the design and construction of a new jail facility in Porterville known as the South County Detention Facility. The grant awarded $60 million and requires a 10% cash and end-kind match from the county of $6.6 million. The program is a joint effort between various county departments and various state agencies. Since 2012, the county has been working with two consultants to prepare plans and specifications for the project. As of today, we've reached 100% design and development phase of the project and are required to submit to the board state of community corrections several documents. These include plans and specifications, a staffing plan and operational plan, a project scope and schedule, a cost estimate by phase and SEQA certification. With the exception of the cost estimate by phase, these documents are being hand-delivered to the BSCC this morning. The state will coordinate the review of the documents and the State Public Works Board is scheduled to hear the matter at its July 2014 meeting. The BSCC will be reviewing our plans with the State Farm Marshal's Office this afternoon at 4:00 PM. At this stage in the project, the project cost estimate exceeds the available construction funding by approximately 4.1 million dollars. As part of the board's action today, the county must demonstrate that it has funds available to pay for the overage, and at this time, I would like to turn the matter over to our CEO, June Russo, for further discussion.
Thank you. June Russo, County Administrative Officer. I've been working with Paul Guerrero in my office to, to, to find the 4.1 million dollars to put aside. Again, this is, this 4.1 million dollars is a result of the value engineering process that we went through. I didn't particularly enjoy the process, but we, we survived it. With the 4.1 million dollars as an estimate at this time, we need to put aside in our capital projects fund, and we'll see if we need it down the line. But what we're proposing to do is in this year's budget, we were recommending to transfer it, the adopted budget had a transfer of 1.5 million dollars to our capital projects fund for the, the eventual building of a Porterville substation, but we recommend using some, those funds to help meet that 4.1 million dollars. And also, our office has been putting money aside in our debt service fund over the years to pay some of that down to, to free up budgetary, operational dollars to help cover our workers' comp funds and what have you. So, we've, you know, over the years, we've paid down three years' worth of comp's debt, saving interest, and we recently paid down the Inventus loan, the tune of almost $5 million to, to also reduce interest costs. In that regard, we have, we have stored away a decent amount of, of money in that debt service fund to the tune of almost $3 million. The idea and hope was that was to pay down the Chevron debt early, again, to relieve the operational impacts to, to departments and be able to bring our workers' comp funding back to where it needs to be. So, at this point, we're recommending using 2.6 million dollars. That's sitting in the debt service fund. That coupled with the 1.5 million brings us to the 4.1 million dollars that we need to at least let the state know that we're, that we're going to put aside now to meet that potential, potentiality. I'm available to ask, answer any questions you might have.
Questions? One question I have, I know we have the millennial fund that has been going into that, that pot of money. Did we plan on this year's allocation to cover our original $6 million?
No, we did not.
We did not?
We did not. We, again, we, the, the match for the AB 900 project and the, and the SB 1022 project was put aside in conjunction and worked with the auditor's office. So, before we closed out the fiscal year two years ago, we set aside $4 million to meet our match for AB 900. That coupled with the land purchase, that we had money set aside in your infamous, put money aside that we, from proceeds of, of sale of assets, was used to buy that land and meet our match. The same, at the end of last fiscal year, we worked with the auditor's office to put aside approximately $4 million for AB, for SB 1022. So, we've used, again, we, we've used a very conservative approach in our budgeting. I think it's, it's served the county well. As a result of the conservative budgeting, we, we tend to have large fund balances with, with one-time monies, and we've used those strategically. I've said over and over again, we're going to use one-time monies for one-time purposes. We used it to pay down debt and to meet the one-time obligations for these two very valuable projects that are going to add over 100 million, close to 100 million dollars in assets to the county. projects that are going to add over $100 million, close to $100 million in assets to the county.
That philosophy has worked well.
It has worked very well.
For one-time expenses. Board allowing, I would like to also send a message to those working on the North County facility that we not get out of control like we did on the South County facility. At this point, I think the sheriff can see that it's costing them a substation. At best, it's costing a substation. So as we go to the value engineering of this other jail system, I'd like staff to hear that, you know, this is not going to be a continual well where they can go and continue to feed and partake. So hopefully, staff has that message clear and loud that they need to live within the means of that grant for this next project. Any other comments?
I just like to make this comment. I think we're very fortunate to have gotten this grant and very fortunate to be able to build a jail in the South County due to the fact we've got a new courthouse. Courthouse is kind of at idle right now. It's not moving, but if it gets to full capacity, it will save us about $500,000 a year in transportation costs, transporting people from Main Jail in Wiley to Porterville back and forth. Much-needed project, much-needed with the new courthouse in Porterville.
I have you entertain a motion then? Move approval. Moved by Ashida. I'll second that. Seconded by Vanderpool. Please cast your votes. It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move to our public hearings, first public hearing. Item number six, request from the Auditor, Controller, Tax Collector, Treasurer, and three other things, voters to approve a proposed schedule. We have someone from the Tax Collector's Office to present that today. Russo, no one being here, I will entertain a motion to continue this item to next week.
Yes, I would strongly recommend that, and I apologize for the further absence.
Entertain a motion to continue the item next week.
Motion made to continue to next week.
Okay, it's unanimous. Do we need to open the public hearing, Madam Counsel?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to open the public hearing since we continue this item to next week?
You do not need to open it if your board wishes you may as a courtesy offer, if there's anyone here who came here today specifically to speak to that item, to allow them to speak.
So if there's anybody here wishing to speak to item number six today, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. There being none, you'll have your opportunity next week. And the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Public hearing, item number seven, request from Health and Human Service Agency to also adopt recommended fee changes. What?
Tim, thank you for being here this morning.
I think that's a first for me. Someone did not show up for a public hearing.
And apparently, congratulations are in order for you for becoming a father too, Tim. That's coming from a new father as well, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And from a grandfather.
Sorry, my presentation got moved off here, so I will put it back on. But yes, it is nice to be back, first week back with new baby, and it has been wonderful.
More rest of the workplace.
All right, well, again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Russo, it's Bales Lang. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to present Health and Human Services' fee hearing for 2014-15 fees. The number of fee requests that we have is fairly small this year, four programs, the Public Guardian Environmental Health Program, public health immunizations, and also our clinic system. Moving right along, the first is a fee for our Public Guardian Representative Payee Program. This is a program that serves social security and supplemental security income recipients by assisting, paying their bills, making sure they're paid on a timely basis. Staff then are responsible for monitoring that those funds come in, that all those bills are collected and paid on a monthly basis. What we do then is charge a fee essentially to perform that service, and that fee is $40. That fee covers then the staff time with tracking the bills, doing the account reconciliations, et cetera. And this would be, again, just a $1 increase from prior year, $39 to $40. The next fee that we're requesting is actually a deletion. These fees are for our community daycare and daycare centers. The centers are now exempted from the food code, therefore, because they do not require our going out permitting and inspecting, we would like to request the board's permission to delete those fees from the schedule entirely. Additional deletes that we would like to request is in the water system. Your board will recall on February 4th that the board approved sending a notice to Department of Public Health that Tulare County Environmental Health would be relinquishing the local primacy agency delegation and returning regulatory oversight of water systems with greater than 14 connections to the state. In correspondence with that action, we're looking at those cleanup items, and that includes then removing fees for those associated systems from our fee schedule. And there are a number of those, again, depending on what the particular service activity or type of connection was. This is the second page. But again, you can see deleting about nine of those fees. The next area, also environmental health, is our water analyses fees. What we're looking at here is requesting the board to increase the water analysis fees for our nitrate, DBCP, and gross alpha tests. And that's reflecting increases that are charged for the lab that we use. The county does not have, or at least our county lab does not have, the ability to perform these tests, and so we do have to send them out to another lab. The closest lab that performs the tests in the area is BSK in Fresno. In addition to being the closest lab, they also offer drop-off sites within Tulare County, so it saves having to do shipping or us sending staff up to drop off those lab results for analysis.
Quick question, are these straight pass-through costs or we hang onto a small administration fee?
These are pass-through costs. What we're doing then is reflecting the fact that the lab that we use has now increased the fee that we pay to have them analyze our tests, and so we're adjusting the fee to reflect that. Additionally, on water analyses, we'd like to request the board's permission to delete one of the tests that we've been doing, the uranium test. We no longer perform that test in lieu of using the gross alpha test, so it would be an unnecessary fee on the schedule. Additionally, in environmental health, we are requesting the establishment of a new fee, a consultation fee. What we've seen over time now is a large number of requests from businesses to provide consultation services prior to actually either building out a new facility or remodeling, redesigning, with the idea that it's, you know, prevents them from then coming in during our permit process and having red flags and have to make changes. It's a proactive approach on the businesses that are using that. Well, the issue we've been having is, last year, we did approximately 150 of those consultation fees. The average time is about an hour and a half to go through the whole process with those businesses. And our current permit structure was just really never set up to address that type of, that type of activity. It's a great concept, and it's encouraging that businesses are doing it because it helps them in the long run, but it's not uniform across all businesses using that service. So rather than look at adjusting permit fees all around to go up, the more equitable options seem to be trying to develop a consultation fee that the businesses that actually use that service then would be picking up that cost. And it does reflect, the fee request at $99 does request our actual staff costs associated with conducting that. What we did is look at it over the year, look at what the unit's staffing looks like, who's typically doing those tests and do, or I'm sorry, that consultation, and doing an estimate then of what those costs would be. And the number we came up with was $99. We're also requesting a new fee be established in, or a couple new fees be established in the prepackaged food sampling area. This actually came directly as a result of our stakeholder process that we engaged in middle to end of last year. And what some businesses brought to our attention is a concern that if a vendor at an event is handing out bottled water or a, you know, prepackaged bag of almonds that's been, you know, already gone through another facility that is inspected and certified to be, you know, producing quality food, they're being charged the same price as a vendor that might actually be preparing some type of food at that event. So what we then looked at is how do we rectify that? And the option is to introduce a nominal fee for those types of activities. And it's based on duration because the longer the time, the greater number of inspections that must be done, so it is still based on that time factor. But the idea being this is a much smaller fee than those vendors were previously having to pay. I know one area that particularly was impacted was the International Ag Expo, and a lot of those vendors that come in once a year for that show and having to pay the full fees to hand out bottled water.
Are these onsite, or do they bring their prepackaged material to you for inspection? Do you actually go?
We go onsite still, yes, to inspect kind of where they're set up at that event.
I don't know how we can go onsite for a single vendor for $19.
I can explain that. If you go to the International Agri Center, there's probably 100 different vendors that are selling, that are handing out, passing out the single bottle of water to people. So 100 times 19, that's 1,900 bucks, so I mean...
I'm talking about where you might have one vendor that's required to fill out an app to get this approval. I don't know how we can send anybody for $19 because we have to pay them for a minimum two hours if it's on a weekend, is that correct?
On the weekend for the two hours. Typically, though, and I have Nilsa here from Environmental Health who can probably answer exactly the details on how we would pay those staff.
That's my only concern is that, you know, we have an inspector go from Visilia to Porterville for 19 bucks.
Hi, Nilsa Gonzalez, Environmental Health. Normally, they're already out there for other vendors, so typically, that's not the only vendor that they're out there inspecting. They're out there taking a look at all of the other vendors with food preparation. So we thought this was probably the most fair cost for the community because it's such a low-risk food item. So they wouldn't go out just for one vendor.
Okay, great, thank you.
And real quick, just to make a quick comment, I'm really glad to see this because I was very much bombarded by several of these vendors in Tulare when they were dealing with these various, you know, events where they were handing out bottles of water or packaged cookies or whatever it was, and having to pay the outrageous fees that we had them paying in the past, the same as other vendors who are preparing food, was just ridiculous. So I'm glad that we're bringing this forward, so thanks.
No such thing as an outrageous fee. There was.
The next item and last for environmental health is our petroleum storage tanks. This also, we're requesting adjustments to these series of fees as a pass-through. What's happened is the state has imposed a $26 surcharge that then put a duty on the county to collect that surcharge and send it back to the state. So at this point, we have few options other than increasing those fees to reflect the surcharge. Next, in our public health immunization program, we are requesting 18 fee increases. The average amount of those increases is about $32. What those are is our immunization clinics where people come in for various vaccines. We have an administrative fee that gets charged in addition to the actual cost of that vaccine. There's also two decreases that we're looking at that, again, the cost of that vaccine went down rather than up. One difference this year is we are requesting an adjustment to the administrative fee. That administrative fee has more or less kept in line for the last few years. And the rationale behind keeping it where we had been is it was serving mostly indigent clients, and we could absorb some of the cost deficit through our health realignment funds. In light of the health realignment funding sweep and also with the Affordable Care Act where you have far fewer indigents actually not having an insurance source to tie back to the immunization costs, coupled with the fact that we still do have our sliding fee scale in place for those who genuinely can't afford to pay for the full cost, we felt this was an appropriate request to come to the board this time. But I do highlight it because it represents a fairly significant increase. That's the top line on here, going from the current fee of $9 to $22. Although the dollar amount is reasonably small, the percentage change is high. And again, that's really a circumstance of us allowing it to be subsidized through health realignment because it was serving the indigent clients. And the rest of those pieces are the changes as a result of the vaccine costs. And as you can see, those, the percentages range pretty significantly, as do the dollar amounts. I won't necessarily read through them unless the board would prefer. And I will add, again, most of these are billed out to an insurance source, whether it be Medi-Cal, Medicare, or private insurance, in addition to offered to sliding fee for clients that do not have an insurance source. And the last fee requests that we have are with our health clinic system. The, our federally qualified health centers are FQHCs. Their rates are based on Medi-Cal procedure codes. We've identified 90 this year that are below the current Medi-Cal rates. And again, there's just been a lot of change in what those rates are as a result of it changes in the insurance industry. We've also identified one that is above the Medi-Cal rate that needs to be adjusted downward. Based on the requirements of an FQHC, we must endeavor to establish fees that are designed to reflect actual costs and also conform to prevailing rates in the region. The industry standard typically is to base that on procedure codes at 150% of Medicare unless that cost is higher than our actual cost to perform that service. All fees that we're requesting the adjustment for are within the cost of providing that service. And because there were so many at 91, I, there is the copy of all the fees outlined in the, in the actual board resolution, but again, it ranges from, you know, ear inspection or evaluation to normal types of doctor's visits, primary care visits, items like that, and anything and everything that can range in a medical procedure. And again, the average amount of our increase, $38. The amount of the decrease, $58, there's only one decrease. And reiterating again, as with our immunizations, those are primarily charged to healthcare plans or consumers that come into the FQHC who don't have insurance, and those that don't have insurance are also given the opportunity for a sliding fee. And that concludes my presentation. I would be happy to entertain questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address. and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Motion approved, Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Worthley.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Lux.
Thank you.
Ben, where are you at? Ben Kimball.
Chris.
How long does your presentation take?
[laughter]
Wrong answer, how long does your presentation take?
As short as you want, it's a three-minute format.
Okay, we'll now take up item number 40 then, which is a presentation by TCAG. I was just assuming, Mr. Kimball, you were doing that because you did it the last time I heard it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I should have said as short as you wanted, I've been corrected. And many of you have heard this presentation already at the TCAG board, so we'll be brief. Cutting down to the challenge that we're facing now, regional transportation planning, it's anticipated by the year 2040, we'll have 250,000 new residents in Tulare County, translates to approximately 70,000 new homes. And there is a meeting that the transportation needs of the existing and the new population at a time of dwindling resources and finances is a tremendous challenge. At the same time, we have mandates from the federal and state governments to address air quality issues, now greenhouse gases, which is a new one. And so putting this all together in a way that meets the transportation needs in various modes of transportation is a challenge, but we believe we've put together a very good plan in the regional transportation plan. We have something new called the Sustainable Community Strategy. It's a requirement to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 10% by the year 2035. We believe that we've not only met that, but exceeded that, maybe by twofold, the way this plan and our modeling shows. We plan on bringing this to the TCAG board on June 30th, along with the Air Quality Conformity Document, which is very important, which we need to basically show that we meet air quality in order to get federal funding, so there's a lot of money at stake with that document. Our Federal Transportation Improvement Program will be up for approval, which is our short-term programming of projects over the next two years. And the Regional Housing Needs Plan will also be on the agenda. So want to make sure everybody knows that. We're happy to receive comments on this and any, answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Ben at this time? We'll look forward to that, June 30th.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spata, how long does your presentation take for a Tiger Grant?
Thirty seconds.
We'll take up item 41. I'm doing this because we will need to go into closed session right before we do item number 39. I want to get some of this business out of the way first. So, Mr. Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CIO and council. Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you today is a request to approve submission of the Tiger Grant to the U.S. Department of Transportation. The key project features are these. This proposal stems from the Federal Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery Act. It's known as the Tiger Act, and therein lies the purpose for describing it as the Tiger Grant. The project is described as a Genesee in Wyoming Short Rail Improvements. The need for the project, very succinctly, is to improve safety, efficiency, economic development, and sustainability. The applicant is Tulare County. Key partners in this process were TCAG and Genesee and Wyoming, Inc. The project is located in an area described as the Exeter subdivision, which starts in the area of Exeter in Tulare County and goes to Fresno. It's known as the Fresno Corridor, and I have a map which will display that in a moment. The timing is that if this project is approved and the award is granted by the federal government, the time for completion is in June 2015. Here is a map. The origin of this project would be here, where my pointer is located from Exeter, going northward through Dinuba into Fresno County and at the Fresno Rail Interchange. All right, there are six major elements of the project: bridge mobilization, existing rail replacement in two areas, signalization at 60 crossings. At the Sun Maid Connection, there will be surfacing, tire replacement, and finally, there will be eight switches that will be replaced. In terms of project benefits, there are seven, which are delineated in great detail in the proposed application. State of good repair. This is very important so as to improve, rehabilitate the existing rail line, so as to ward off any inefficiencies or safety problems that may occur in the future. Quality of life is important because this proposal, which is a $17 million proposal, will generate substantial economic growth for the, for the area in Tulare County. Sustainable communities. This is an opportunity for Tulare County to implement SB 375, in which case, by shifting a lot of the freight traffic from truck to rail, it would bring about a substantial reduction in greenhouse gases, which is a key goal of SB 375. In addition, this proposal will bring about more transportation choices because it will improve freight rail service within Tulare County. In terms of planning and economic development, this proposal implements TCAG's RTP, as well as our general plan, by combining planning and economic development. In other words, by developing new rail service near residential areas, we are taking the existing rail locations, improving it, so we don't have to intrude in residential areas and bring about those adverse environmental impacts. And again, environmental sustainability. This will improve air quality, reduce greenhouse gases, which are key goals of the federal government, as well as our general plan. And finally, by making these extensive improvements, it will bring about safety at rail crossings and in other areas so that the general public will not be exposed to adverse risks. The grant funding here is that the grant request, the application, is for a little over $14 million. In addition, and very significantly, Genesee in Wyoming, who will do the construction work, is stepping forward and providing the private match of $3.5 million. The total cost for the project and for, in the grant application, will be $17.5 million with no net county cost. All right, very briefly, in less than 30 days, we've gotten this proposal before you, but in doing so, we'd like to make a number of key acknowledgements. First and foremost, to your board of supervisors for the leadership and the direction with regard to address rail service, freight service in Tulare County. In addition, in terms of CIO fiscal and administrative support, this is critical to us in order to make things happen at RMA and for the county. The RMA action team. The action team consisted of Aaron Bach, Mike Washam, Eric Coyne, Laurie Mercer, and Kiriya Fieros, and these folks worked tirelessly for the last several weeks to get this application to you so that we can file it hopefully by tomorrow and make the deadline, which is early next week, with flying colors. The TCAG connection, the support of Ted Smalley, Ben Kimball, Ben Giuliani, and Gabe Gutierrez have been tremendous in terms of providing the informational support, as well as the encouragement to get this done. And the added value of this, and this was discussed recently, is that even if we aren't successful, because this is a highly competitive grant, the lion's share of the work has been done whereby we can present this to other public agencies within California who may be receptive if we aren't successful. So there is added bang for the buck by doing this work in presenting to other agencies, especially because of the environmental values here and the economic development values to other public agencies. Genesee in Wyoming, they provided a great deal of technical information to us to get this due. And again, the $3.5 million is really putting their money where their mouth is in order to push this thing forward. Then finally, project supporters. Very briefly, we have been fortunate that we have six letters of support, which I will not read, but just identify in general and then submit it for the record. The first letter of support sent to the U.S. Department of Transportation is from Congressman Devin Nunes. The next letter of support is from Congressman David Valadeo. The next letter of support is from Republican Leader and Assemblywoman Connie Conway. The next letter of support for Tulare County is from Senator Gene Fuller. The next letter of support is from Senator Tom Berryhill. And finally, we have a letter of support from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District's Executive Officer. Before I move very quickly into the recommendation, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, I would ask that Aaron Bach be allowed just to say a few remarks, since he, as well as Kiriya Fieros, did the lion's share of the work, the research and the writing to get this before you. Thank you.
I know Sarah put on a tie today, we'll allow him to speak.
Thank you, Chairman Cox, supervisors. Thank you, Mr. Spata. I'd just like to say this is a great opportunity for staff to be able to write this grant. Normally, we would not, would not really be that involved, but working with TCAG, with Genesee in Wyoming, with the Air District, Caltrans, and other state agencies that have gone through this process, it's just been a great opportunity. I'd also like to make mention that what Ben Kimball was talking about as far as the RTP and Sustainable Community Strategies, this was one of the projects highlighted in that document, so I think this would be a great addition and fulfillment of that TCAG's work to date. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, the recommendation. First and foremost, we would like your board to approve the submission of the grant application with any necessary refinements, and there have been some refinements in terms of, we've added some data in order to make the grant more complete. Direct that the grant application be submitted to the U.S. Department of Transportation. We request that the board chair sign the grant application. However, I should say, because this is an electronic submittal, there will be no wet signature. Just your name and your title, Mr. Chairman, will be there, and if the federal government does provide a form, it would be after the submittal. Next, to authorize the CIO to act on behalf of the county with respect to all matters involving this grant. Next, to authorize your board chair to sign the grant. In addition, give authorization to RMA to sign fund requests and also implement various program activities. Request for the auditor to issue warrants as necessary. And then finally, and respectfully, to obtain a certified copy of a resolution, hopefully today, because we would like to file the application tomorrow on a timely basis. That concludes our presentation, and we respectfully request approval of this recommendation.
I just have a few things I wanted to say. First of all, that was a lot longer than 30 seconds. Second of all, appreciate the high-energy presentation that's kind of in competition with Dennis Lehman. You are missing the bowtie, and that really would have added to the presentation, but really just want to compliment you on the outreach and the collaboration that you've brought to the table to make this happen. I do think this is very important infrastructure for Tulare County, economic development, air quality, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But thank you to your team, they're working well together, and this really shows innovation and outside-the-box thinking to work together and push this thing forward without regard for who gets credit. So I appreciate that, and thank you to all those who have been helping to make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Worthley.
I guess it was only about a month ago or so that Alan and I sat in the TCAG offices with the Genesee Wyoming folks that presented this to us, and of course, the key was that their willingness to put up the matching funds, because that's been a missing issue for some time in going forward with a project like this. And then we knew we had a very short timeframe, and so I want to extend my thanks to all of those who worked so diligently. I know I made a few phone calls, but I mean, it was only to just encourage people that were already doing the job, whether it was at the Air District or at the county level. And this was, I know, a Herculean effort to get this matter done in the timeframe that it was done. And Mike shared with me yesterday that we're hoping we still may get a letter of support from Senator Boxer as well, based upon your conversations with her administrative aide. And I know this is a very competitive grant, but perhaps with the U.S. Centers' support, it might kind of push it over the top. This is a, this is a wonderful project for Tulare County. I know Mr. Sheed and I were somewhat shocked, really, when we met with the Genesee Wyoming folks, and they referenced this part, this is a company which owns short lines throughout the world, not only the United States, and they referenced this part of what they own as being a crown jewel. So they really see the opportunity for business development along this line. They've seen the growth, even as bad as the line is now, they've witnessed a lot of growth going along within this area. So this is a great project for Tulare County, and I just, you know, we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope this matter passes muster when we get to the authorities who will be determining who qualifies.
Well, this has been a long, hard fight to improve the rail line in Tulare County. It shows the importance of short haul rail, and I'm glad that all these years of getting such positive press for this effort, that is finally coming to be a reality.
And I think the real key here is definitely the, it's definitely the private partnership with Genesee in Wyoming, so I think that's real important to point out.
Supervisor Sheed, I thought you would have had much more to say, but...
Well, you know, the only sad thing is that we didn't get a company like Genesee Wyoming ten years before. San Joaquin Rail destroyed our whole network. And, you know, Steve and I got beat up pretty bad in our last campaign with all the jingles working on the railroad, but people don't understand how important rail is and how many people want rails. So I know the TCAG is authorized to the city of Porterville to go through and try to buy the right-of-way from Strathmore, clear through Porterville and out the other side, so hopefully, down the road, maybe get Genesee Wyoming to put rail back down there and help that area with some industrial businesses, too. So, no, I'm all behind, I'm 100% behind this thing.
And I also want to compliment our staff of not only the county, but TCAG and Genesee Wyoming for getting this grant put together in a very short period of time.
And Mr. Spata, you mentioned the RMA's action team. I've had an opportunity in other areas to work with your action teams, and I'll tell you what, they really are action teams. I'm always impressed at the amount of work that gets done, the quality of work that gets done, and the staff's willingness to accept responsibilities. I'm sure Mr. Bach told you, I tossed him under the bus last week, and he, and he rolled with a smile. It was appreciated that, to see your teams work in the way which they do. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Consider a motion.
Move approval.
Okay. Move by Supervisor Sheed, a second by Worthley. Cast your votes, it's unanimous. Okay, our last item on our agenda today is item number 39. We do have that set for closed session, and we will adjourn into closed session for no more than 10 minutes, since listed as item A on our closed session. What? Got to reach back down here and get that. Michelle, Michelle, if you don't feel good, tell me, if you're okay.
Go through two.
Whoa. You okay? I'm sorry.
Was it not? God.
I have the key, but I haven't read the question.
Michelle, thank you.
Thank you.
I think they were leaving.
To our office, there's going to be a single...
He's on vacation.
I didn't realize it was 10 o'clock.
Yeah, so I'm making a talk about it, but that's why she was showing you those questions. All right? Okay. Okay, Kiriya, did you?
Bye.
Oh, CHP, was that you?
Yes, yeah, I did.
All right, I knew it.
I did call.
I knew it, okay.
Did you call?
No, I saw him here, and I said, you're going to get 15 letters, I know who called.
Oh, he knows?
Okay, yeah, yeah. I didn't say, I didn't tell him.
I have a little problem, but I was like, oh, this is it.
Yeah, no, so we're going to be back in interviews, but I'm going to try to pop out, and we'll talk real quick about the schools, but then also the...
But then also the, um... We need to put each project description in one PDF or one thing. And I'm going to send it to Ed Jones. Because I'm going to call him about the conservation course. Today is school day? Is this a short day? Okay, cool.
Oh, yeah, Tuesday. Yes.
So you're gone when?
At four.
At four? All right. Well, I'm going to look for you between...
Okay.
You know, I have to go sit here.
Well, last week I had to head. And I'm still finally just getting over it. It started the Friday before.
I said 41, but I just decided on 41, so I've got to. No, no, they just closed to come back for 10 minutes or something.
I'm going to tell the folks in the hallway.
Have they had any speakers come up during that already?
No, 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 they haven't even...
This is, sorry, during that.
Yeah, they haven't even talked about it yet. Did they delete it?
All right, Clint, sorry. I know. I know. You're just trying to watch out for that.
That sticks out about six inches. Maybe we should recess it into the wall.
I bumped it before.
Hey, Clint, could you straighten that seal up?
Brutal. Okay, we are back in open session now. We'll take up item number 39. Mr. Howard.
Good morning, members of the board. Bryce Howard, Director of Solid Waste. Very short presentation here. Staff is requesting your board to require licensed refuse haulers to deliver residual material collected within their service area through county-operated solid waste facilities effective May 1st, 2014, in accordance with the Tulare County Ordinance Code, Section 4-03-1135. This will allow the county to continue solid waste operations, which are necessary to the public health and safety. The fiscal impact of this is roughly $1.3 million annually. The Tulare County Enterprise Fund is projected to lose this year about $1 million. But because of your actions back in February, next fiscal year, because of the closure of Woodville Landfill, we feel that that will basically be out of balance. But what we do need is another $2 million plus annually for capital reserves to go forward with expanding landfill and for equipment. This will go a long ways towards that goal. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions?
I do have a question, real quick. First of all, you have to go to the Dennis Lehman School of Presentations. That'll help you a little bit, Bryce. I'm kidding. But one thing I want you to just explain, I think it's important that people understand. I know the haulers understand it and we do because of our very recent solid waste educational experience. But would you just explain what residual is? So just in a hypothetical situation, what you're typically talking about here?
So residual is material that is landfilled after it's gone through a processing for recyclables. So once recyclables are pulled out, what's left over that gets landfilled is residual.
Okay, so under the current system right now, if a truck were to pull into whatever processing facility, there was a piece of cardboard at the very top of the trash load in a completely full dump truck, take the cardboard off, it's been processed, the rest of the material is residual. Is that...
Well, some would define residual like that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I do have a request from two folks to speak to this item. Art Penya and Kelly Astor. Who, Art, are you first?
Yep, please, thank you.
Art, if you please, state your name and address for the record.
Sure, absolutely. Art Penya, Penya's disposal, located in Cutler, California. Chairman Cox, members of the board, you know, my company has been active in all of Tulare County. We, in all jurisdictions that we serve, my company's been here for about 50 years and my family, we're very committed to this county. So I'm here today to talk about the resolution, and I'm not opposing the flow control residual resolution. I'm not here today to do that. I do have just a couple of concerns. So today I'm asking that the county could consider delaying the implementation of this resolution, just a couple of months. We have only recently received a franchise agreement from the county for review. However, my company, along with Waste Management, another processor in the county that deals with a lot of residuals, have been working closely with your new county solid waste manager the last month to help resolve the landfill revenue shortfall. And we are very, very close to an agreement with the county on the issue of tip rates that may result in more tons than a county can realize by just increasing unincorporated residual. County haulers only control about 30% of all the waste that's generated in Tulare County, so we're really just a small percentage of it. This extra tonnage will increase county revenue and may go a long way to help bridge and possibly fund the anticipated shortfall that will remain with the county landfill reserve fund if no other waste or residual tonnage is secured. So we're talking about waste other than what we control in the county. The proposed resolution has no provision for a possible reduced tip rate. As the current tip rate structure would be detrimental to my company and the recycling and diversion operations that we undertake daily that are crucial to the county and the jurisdictions that we serve. The delay will also allow a little more time for franchise agreements to be completed, so that all may potentially coincide with this resolution. Again, I'm not here to oppose the resolution. I understand it. I get it. My company is going to be part of the solution. That is a given. We just need a little bit more time. A couple of months at the most is all I'm asking for. That concludes my response. That concludes my argument. I know Kelly wants to say a few words. Kelly's with the association.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. I think Art Penya did a very good job in summarizing, but I'll just highlight a couple of points. There's flow control in effect now. This is about the residual component, which is the material that, or after a load has been processed. I know of no legal restriction on your ability to do what's being proposed today, but the issue is one of timing. Many of you may recall that last June or July, I appeared before you. And at that time, the haulers had submitted a franchise agreement for consideration by staff. Not much happened on that until just about a month ago, where we got back to the table with county staff and had a different template that we're now working from. The second, and I hope it's a couple of meetings, series of couple of meetings we're going to have, takes place tomorrow. And flow control, staff's made very clear, is a critical component of going forward with these more comprehensive and longer-term agreements. The only issue with doing this now is you're only attacking a piece of it, and I don't know what that's going to do to the overall negotiation itself. So I want to echo Art Penya's request for just a little more time on this. You're not hearing me on behalf of the association remark in opposition to this either. I don't think anybody that is a participating member of the association will legally challenge your right to do this. It's just a question of, you know, not whether so much, but how. And as Art pointed out, even if you were to exercise jurisdiction today and do this, you still only have legal authority over about a third of the waste that's generated in the county, because the rest of it comes out of incorporated cities. What we've informally communicated to staff is the haulers that also haul in those cities, to the extent that they are legally able, are open to a communication, a conversation with the county about how maybe even those tons could be dedicated to your solid waste facilities here, which would mean, hopefully, some recognition of those additional tons coming in in the rate. So we don't want to see any steps taken today that lock you into a $34 per ton rate if, in fact, you can examine the possibility of a low rate if additional tons are coming to you. I don't know that it's structured that way, one way or the other. It appears to be silent to me in terms of rate. But the forecast you see in the staff report contemplates $34 a ton. We just want to leave open the possibility that as we deal with this comprehensively and get all the tons and all the system working together, that this ordinance won't be in kind of a limiting factor, obstacle you have to overcome. So rather than May 1, maybe 60 days, we're optimistic. Staff's been very reasonable to this point. We're hoping we can get a long way in getting progress on those negotiations in the next two months or so. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you mind if I ask council a question? I'm intrigued. What about the action today causes you to think that the board would lock itself into a particular rate?
Well, as I just indicated, there's nothing in the ordinance itself which suggests that, but we thought it important enough to ask that this be pulled off the consent counter so we can make sure that the supervisors understood there was a potential concern that this not hamper negotiations on a larger scale. If the feedback we're getting or get is that it won't, then we've done our job.
Well, I mean, you would agree that following negotiations that are going on, the board could come back and reset almost any of the rates, provided it's justified.
That's my feeling. I'm happy to hear you say that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Gene, I do have a question for Bryce also.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Question I have, you know, last year we adjusted the tipping fee.
Correct.
And if my recollection serves me correctly, we also approved a fee increase for the haulers to charge their customers.
That's correct.
We know, did all of the haulers increase their fees to their end users?
They did.
Thank you.
Yeah, G. Rousseau, County Administrative Officer. You know, Bryce and Denise and I have talked about this issue for some time. We don't view the flow control as being really a part of the franchise process. This is something we should have done in August of 2012, when we put the flow control in. We, you know, we should have put, we should have put all garbage collected in the unincorporated area of the county. We didn't think the residual would be an issue, and it clearly has been an issue. We didn't think the residual would be an issue, and it clearly has been an issue since that time. It has cost the system over a million dollars. A system that is in financial, financial straits. This is something that, that other jurisdictions are doing, and quite frankly, are using a bigger hammer than, than we are considering and are talking about today. So to put your fears at ease, you know, the fees, we are talking about the fees if we do get cities on board, which we are actively pursuing right now, and the franchise agreement is separate from this action, at least. That's, that's, that's how my office and the solid waste department view it.
Are there any other questions of staff? Nope, okay. That being said, we'll entertain a motion then?
Mr. Chairman, you asked for a question, I have a question, just a quick comment. I know that when, you know, when you raise the rates, as we did to try to cover shortfalls, you have a not anticipated reaction to that. So we anticipated we were gonna generate a certain amount of money by raising our fees. Instead, what happened was, we raised significantly less. That's what happens when you raise rates, because people find ways to take their waste someplace else to save, save money, and I understand that. Having said that, I know we are in negotiations with cities about differing rates and so forth, and so my only concern is that we're putting the burden on the haulers that represent one, about thirty percent of the, of the actual amount of waste produced in Tulare County, to try to make up these, these differences. And I, I'm inclined to think that we ought to give our own people in the unincorporated communities and their, and their businesses the same benefit we're looking at trying to give to the, these cities, who are also responsible for having landfill services available to them. And so to that end, I, I have no problem with, you know, instead of making this effective May one, making it effective June first, to sort of offset some of that, because we're gonna have, they're gonna be paying this increased tipping fee on something they did not have to pay before. And I, and I will take exception to something that was stated by my fellow supervisor about what constitutes recycling. If you've been to Mr. Pena's facility and you've seen what recycling means, it's not taking one piece of cardboard off of a garbage, off of a truckload and calling that recycling. It runs over a machine, there are people who work it. It does not, it's not inexpensive to do recycling, it costs money. So there is that additional cost that is incurred by the recycler in doing the recycling process, and now he takes the residual and hauls it to the dump and pays a high fee. We're requiring our recyclers to do recycling, and required by, we're required by the state of California to do recycling. Recycling is not inexpensive, it costs money. And so we have forced that cost on our, our haulers. We're forcing the higher fee on our haul, on our haulers. And I think in the short, since we're talking about a short-term situation here, leading up to the franchise agreements which are forthcoming, that a delay of additional thirty, thirty days is not unwarranted. So I, I would move that we would make this effective June first.
Mr. Chair, just to make a couple of comments, and in response, you know, I've actually spent a lot of time educating myself with, and making myself available to all of the haulers in Tulare County. And I have learned a lot about the landfill process. My hypothetical situation was just to make it very simple so that everyone would understand the basics of what residual versus non-residual would be. So that's what I was trying to do. And, and you know what, we are tasked with the responsibility of keeping this county in a very financially sound state, and we've always done so. Postponing this thirty days is gonna cost the county potentially another hundred thousand dollars. And I know that we are negotiating franchise agreements, I know we're getting further down the road with our haulers, and I'm appreciating them coming to the table and helping us. However, we are charged with, and we have the opportunity today, to stop a little bit of bleeding that's hurting our system currently, and could potentially, or it has cost our county over a million dollars just in this last year. So I, for one, am comfortable going forward, as presented by staff, making this effective May first. It's, it is unfortunate, but I do know that we are going to continue to negotiate, and maybe we'll even get this franchise agreement done even faster with making this effective even sooner.
Any other comments? Supervisor Ashida?
I concur with Supervisor Vanderpool. Yeah, this has been going on for sixteen months. It is not like something that happened yesterday and we changed overnight, it happened overnight. I'm in favor of going for May first. We're losing a hundred thousand dollars a month, and I'm sorry that because we have less trash than the county, and the tipping rates, and maybe the county residents, unincorporated residents like myself, we're gonna have to pay more. We're not here, the county general fund is not here to subsidize services. So I'm, I'm ready to cut the bleeding as soon as possible. But I wanna mention to the staff, I am not in favor of giving cities a different rate, tipping rate versus our own haulers.
We can...
That's not before us today? Supervisor?
Mr. Chair, you do have a motion.
Okay, we do have a motion, do we have a second?
Well, I'm gonna have to confer with my colleagues here on this, that, that we need to stop the bleeding. And hopefully, down the road, get everybody together, and hopefully, everybody will use our landfills. And that's, I think that's the, I think that's where we're headed, but we've gotta start somewhere, and I think today is where we start.
Okay, so I'm, what I'm hearing, the motion fails due to the lack of a second, entertain another motion.
Mr. Chair, I would make approval that we follow staff recommendation and require all residual to come to Tulare County based on what was presented in the staff report today and what staff had mentioned in today's public comments as well.
Moved by Vanderpool?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ennis, please cast your votes. The votes are for unanimous, one against, Worthley voting against. Okay, that concludes our open session of our meeting today. Madam Counsel, do we have need for further closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We had item A, items B through E on your board's closed session agenda, item C is pulled off agenda, and there will be an announcement.
Michelle? I have these two. Did you want your post-it note back? Did you need that post-it note back? Okay.
Announcement out of closed session today, April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, by Kathleen Bales-Lang, County Council. At the last open session meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors on April first, two thousand fourteen, I did not report the votes of an action, item A, which was taken during the closed session meeting that took place prior to the evening open session meeting on that date. The board approved the motion providing a defense for an employee in the case of Lynetta Ibarra versus County of Tulare et al, Tulare County Superior Court Case Number two five five four six zero, on the motion of Supervisor Ashida, which was seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Supervisor Cox and Ennis voted in favor, and Supervisor Worthley was absent. There are no other announcements. And there's the... From the last time we met, it was on the first. Um, but I did not announce it out. Here, I wrote it down for you, or I've written down here for you. Um, if you have any questions, give Barb, bring her on the call. Apparently, that makes the solid all leaking square there.